Pretty good.
Great, thank you. All right, meeting ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town's hearing for appeals meeting of September uh October. October twenty twenty. Welcome back. Uh we begin our whole meeting in two orders, start with A and then we'll start our board member starting down on my right.
Chairman Honnery?
Scott Abzabel.
Matt Skaia.
Bob Stewart.
I'm the chairman, Mr. Jeff Hammer, uh absent tonight is Tom Hickey, and we are short one one member. Uh we do have a form of five members, but as a reminder, any motion to require our four votes uh in favor of the two carrier motion from majority vote. Uh with the meeting tonight, we have our attorney, Bill Hettie, our rights, our secretary, Allison Mowley, courts director, Attorney Brad again, our assistant planner, Dalia Saros. And uh so we review our review tonight and have the authority to be the board of the public here to appeal the decision of the Golden Enforcement Officer. The legal criteria that you find on board to determine if this position that you feel was defined by state law is documented in the Congress' only law was provided to the applicant at the time their application. Based on this guidance, the applicant is expected to present his or her case of the sole order appeals. Then the public will be ordered not to immediately comment on the application. We request all comments, questions, requests of the board not directly to the applicant. The board will then review the material submitted as well as the testimony presented that seriously by the applicant and the public. Will you give your determination this position of the appeal on the majority vote tonight? Or will you give the public hearing in the future dates? As for town code, any member of the public who's busy today is not required to disclose his or her name matters or any other contact or related information. Uh with COVID related house meeting, we do ask anybody who wishes to be tonight, please come up to the podium. Uh you please keep your mask on if you can maintain social distance. Uh while seated as the members are in the audience, you're with relatives or people usually with it, but if we take a mask off, uh maintain a mask, if approached the podium, you will take a mask back up to the podium again. Actually, there's not really would be correct TV laws, so as well as the board members here, so. First order, we have three public hearers tonight, uh we will start with uh reading the meeting, public hearing twenty twenty, you guys got zero nine Montra. Uh we're making sure Victoria, Simonish, uh the new plaza, uh spring first drive. Uh I'll begin, I know we detailed at the last time looking for some additional information which was provided. Uh we have a planning board, um planning board and the chairman, Mr. Reverend Landingsong. Uh there was some discussion regarding signage during development of the plant development district. Uh however, it only focuses on whatever results focused on mining sign upfront. Uh there was a requirement in the resolution passed by the town board that the applicant would see the areas on mining sign for science condition issue. That has not proven us right now, so that has not been already up. Uh what we do have is nothing in regard to the signage to be in the physical business so back and I swear to one where we were actually defining the background of what's review regarding signage. We have a representative from the applicant here tonight, Mr. Toria.
I uh no, yes.
Nobody yes?
Uh yeah, yeah. Sorry about that stuff. Um I was asking the sign, I figured you guys were right, you know, maybe I could work on that once it didn't evolve. He went into compliance. I'm all signed. He changed plans, he went again. For everything to talk, everything through, I don't have anything in hand, but I have a little from last week. All signed, went into compliance, went with a smaller way of signs as a fee, being able to discuss what's for feet. And the second time with that is uh
Twenty one.
So.
So we don't have an effect very much, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I think we gotta table that.
Yeah. Table like with a draw or with a drawn or like represent themselves next time, so. With that, we will take all public hearing twenty twenty dash zero nine Montra till the next meeting, which is October twenty seven. Uh I actually, we do have a motion list, take a list? No, got it. So with that, that will that will appear in the table till October twenty seven. Uh yes. Uh with that, we will move on to uh the second appeal tonight, twenty twenty dash ten. The appeal of living red doghouse LLC, seven hundred and probably determined by easier which New York one two zero six one. The applicant proposes to construct a plaza mining sign on eleven point six seven feet tall and nine point zero seven five feet wide which needs two individual differences. The review of the proposal will not comply with final decisions of the town's only law. Section three point three point two B zero two, sign shall be no larger than five feet tall and eight feet wide. The names of the individual businesses are not permitted. Therefore, the proposed action requires two area areas for the property located at seven hundred and probably determined by easier which New York. Pack number one seven seven point eight dash four dash ten. Uh within the packet, we have a planning board recommendation where a motion was made by Chairman Madison as follows. The planning board goals to be set up down hand for report and make positive recommendation based on sound planning and zoning principles with the master to see the attached report further details that motion carried by six two zero votes. Uh within the record, we have down hand the report including the dialogue uh with modification that remains to the sign will ask the applicant to just review those and get that portion uh of the changes compared to the original to have on record. We also have a notification of zoning review action. I've had a carefully reviewed information submitted as part of the subject for referral. The Renssland County Bureau Economic Development Plan has determined that proposals which are not in any direct action of the county plan and that local consideration shall prevail. And also in the packet, we have authorization form where Christopher Rajio gives permission to guarantee access to the signs represented. So representative wants to approach to just review the
Hi, great to know my name today. Um so basically, a couple things just for some just how I was leaning on the right of the six seven feet tall and the nine point zero seven five wide and the rest. If you look at the wrong, my designers sometimes very overdeveloped and very detailed overdrawn. And if you look where one hundred eighty point nine one inch measurement is, it's actually just a desperate uh flash change of the roof. So that's actually the sign is eighty foot tall, so that four eighty foot wide, which we are in the last. And what I should want to know there?
Uh we can go through that again.
So if you look at your rendering, if you look at the bottom of this. It's more of a kind of a facility one. Anyway, if you look at that, she was showing with her one hundred and eighty point nine one inch measurement was the actual overhang of the ease of the roof element. The actual sign is only, the actual sign is at a far place they refer to as only be for the wide. So that portion is in the last.
Oh, so the lady might want to Drivich, Drivich.
Is it her, what is it?
Drivich, Drivich.
And other thing I'd like to point out is although the sign is at the district and five foot tall, maybe for the wide for the apartments, the design currently says it's a hundred and ten inches tall. The sign currently is out of compliance whether they're in position or not, I can not know. So we are not altering the size of the sign in any way, shape or form. We're adding decorative elements, bringing in the nice bar adhesive to both of the names of the matching building in front of. Also, we're trying to make a safety pattern happen with see if people are driving on that road, be aware of that. The sign is easy to see, so having a little bit of dirt to it, a little bit of damage to it, and a big activity with it makes it a little more visible. Thus, the other reason being that it already proved to have multiple tenants in that building. I want to say that the B two zone is not zone just listed multiple tenants. Everything in and around that lot has multiple tenants. It actually is a little bit of a kind of a lish zone, that soliciting B two zones. All of the regulations, it's already granted, it's already listed in the B two zone. So also on a safety issue, asking to put a second tenant on that building. Again, we're safety issues, people are being, we're constantly getting the times back without having to cause a big damage on that highway. Um so those are basically why we're asking, we're asking, we're really not changing anything at all as far as how that sign sits distinctly. Except for adding small portions to the bottom, representing one ten, and then we got very longs.
There was some suggestion in the report regarding change to the bottoms, the tenants, the pole. Was shown, is that in law with the base?
I think you know that's something where we're going to, you know, feel that uh but there's weird question to our ordinance, maybe straight question, which mine new sign only allows to be x amount of ball, but if I own a sign, it allows to be like twenty five foot tall. So I don't know for sure, but if you look at the planet fitness, I think I had a wrong word, that happened to my assumptions. If that's anything, all planet fitness sign, why can't you touch the bottom? And then you would stay on that base technically like the virus and become a mining sign. If it's not a single wall, it's a plant sign. So what we did at planet fitness, my assumption then is they rose their monument above ground, put it on a single wall, and then we were able to add a tiny bit of height per regulation. So one of our tenants in order to not waste, we're climbing the door, the beginning of everything was trying to put it on a single wall, raising it off the ground, but avoided that a little situation in one single. So it and everything else that I'm looking at right now, if that's your preference, then I'm sure we okay with it. But ultimately, that may look much better if we had that.
Questions to the board?
So the the sign is uh still wanting to be parallel with nine one one seven, right?
Yeah, we're actually not, the sign that is there, it is standing there, we're just addressing that. So the location, everything about that sign, everything is staying, setting, careful lighting inside will change.
You're adding a sort of roof section to that? And are you adding something to bottom or anything to that?
Yeah, just to give the more of a longer.
What do you thought you uh are increasing size of the bottom?
We are increasing the size because currently it's just a single six inch or four inch round steel wall.
Okay, how how wide is it going to be?
Uh it's proposed that bottom piece is at sixty inches, which gives us the ability to put a sixteen inch by six inch high nine one one after all there for reference for saving as well.
Right, okay, how how easy is it going to be?
Um it's only going to be about four six inches. I think it's six inches actually.
And then we got a doghouse additional ten to be roughly.
Yes, I'm not.
I'm not.
Copy.
This is the sign about just lately, I think, held on to us, because I like forty four inches versus twenty four inches, same with it.
Yes.
Can you say there were ways in the guts to be all signs to be let?
Um so and sorry.
Any questions to the board? Thank you. Uh here none for everybody on the tenants side, which is pretty regarding this appeal.
I have a general comment here, um this is public hearing, correct?
Correct.
And it's meaning public to YouTube.
Correct.
Is there any uh option or mechanism for people to have on this YouTube?
There is not, correct.
So what we call up the meeting.
Because we have a public forum here tonight, public, we know this, we're legal notice, so we have an inverse of public hearing tonight.
Okay, that's not what was saying. So as I said before, meetings is that this is this whole area here is that I want to come to for only people even the number of people can't navigate the dark path or else. So in terms of changing venue or setting up, I think you can YouTube in or is something else?
Kind of knowledge, we've uh we've been in this discussion with the town hall uh regarding the forum, uh and the meetings are soon to move back to town hall as they haven't been held in the past. Uh just wasn't ready yet.
The other comment I have is the fact that we're reviewing a conversation that I think in town, correct?
That's not any different, so the public portion of this public hearing is only related, yes, to this sign, appeal tonight. But that's why it was related to that.
Continue that. So we got plans or maybe the zone laws. Is that a zone law plan wanting to address public sign peristatations?
Uh I am not a member of that committee, uh being directed by the town staff and uh I know Simon has had a request to be a little bit as part of the town planning, but I'm not sure time or time that draft town planning is a little bit of a public review right now.
And the reason I'm asking that, these police people have not come before, people were so restricted. Not saying that they shouldn't be restricted, but when you're you have a zone law scenario that it protects the people around, you're always set from the out, people are finding those different. Or not. Just kidding.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that, sorry. Thank you. Those comments have been made in the past, that endorse the amount of sign guarantees that have been established for, so that comments in the past do that admit, so. Uh and again, the public is that document is available for all time, all of the comments on that document two three town was like. Anybody else wishes to be regarding any field tonight?
Yeah, I'll say two things, I don't be over big enough, I don't know, you know. I just, the the two uh comments I wanted to make, you know, there's just a bit of confusion about where are businesses located, or anything that will be area right now, pretty dangerous driving area, people are taking off from the uh traffic in my way, or like these are falling down, ninety twenty, forty fifty mile an hour, or whales trying to come out of this section or find where this uh you know, where we're located. And so that's really what we need, some sort of science to direct that. It's really tough to even hold them out of that park lot, so we're just trying to get the people where where we are, so that they're not driving around looking for that. Well, I think if they didn't with the traffic, whether they're fast or slow. I think the other thing is, the other business there in marketplace, uh Suede Venture, you know, struggling. I think they've always kind of been in that one of the tight business that has maintained, staying in business for a long time. But I think they've always been on that borderline of kind of these businesses are going out of business. And it was my goal as a landlord landlord, not to shrink their sign, you know, they have a sign out there. And that's basically their own marketing sign for their business. And if I move in and and my sign taken away, have their sign like my sign, you know, shrink their sign and have. So if you really have a goal to really not even consider business, uh shrink, decide his sign is a very good idea.
Thanks. Alright, great, uh any other questions or comments for board today?
Here none, or understanding most of public care.
Public that most of the source of second.
On second.
Same by Scott Abzabel, all those in favor? I oppose abstaining, motion carries five two zero. And just so, you guys, it doesn't matter for the personal, you guys welcome to stay the rest of tonight, uh listen in, uh be in a whole interaction. Uh welcome to the meeting if you wish, you can check out the town hall for our outcome. Um or feel free to say something when it's involved, so. And we will move on to twenty twenty, appeal number twenty twenty dash seven. The appeal of T C J Troy Road LLC of five nine setup and probably determined by easier which New York one two zero six one. The applicant proposes to construct two twenty five point four three four square foot, the sign on the side on the southwest in southeast elevations. The review of the proposal will not comply with final decisions of the town's only law. Session three point three point two A B three, the maximum shall be twenty four square feet. Therefore, the proposed action requires two area areas for the property located at five nine seven probably determined by easier which New York. Pack number one sixteen six point fifteen dash four dash eleven. Uh within the packet, we have a planning board recommendation where a motion was made by Chairman Madison as follows. The planning board goals to be set up junior board report and make positive recommendation based upon sound planning and zoning principles with the masters to see the current report for further details, that motion carried by six two zero vote. Uh we have the detail of the report by Mr. Moore regarding the rise in sign and uh included in where the actual map comes from. Took a moment with the twenty five square feet. And uh some comparisons to the mother signs on through four and other pluses. There is also an inclusion that the proposed sign exists in the maximum of the area by one one point five square feet, either six percent of the area allowed. Which is this particular sign, proposal is determined to be in a territory neighborhood and uh feeling that there's no adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental condition in the neighborhood or district. Within the packet, we also have rest of the county, there are locations going to review action. I've had a perfectly reviewed the information submitted as part of the subject for referral. The Bureau of Economic Development Plan has determined that proposal does not have any direct action to the county plan and that local consideration shall prevail. Uh we have an authorization form where T C J Troy Road LLC just permissioned Cali sign LLC represented in nineteen, represented, and we come on and set up uh just as review of the proposal and ideally why the twenty five square foot change size sign that we needed versus twenty four.
Alright, good evening, we're members, I'm the chairman of J Cali, Cali Sign Company. And I am here for you today, uh we have our professor who is the veteran to Horizon for the sign type. Uh we have a five of grades for the two wall signs. Uh security mining sign that requires some drawings, right, I believe that's not part of this equation. Because here for the two wall signs. And uh Horizon, if you look at your design, uh if you take the square footage of the Horizon letters, not looking at the logo. Uh you're trying to make it seven point one square feet. Uh if you add the check mark, uh if you draw a box around the logo in as Verizon, it becomes a twenty five square feet. So I'm here for the words you asked for political or the sign type, which uh without the logo, which apply there's a code, uh with the logo and your sign, you're strictly not your sign guidelines. Uh kick your own square footage, so the sign is uh the following line I have for people to sort of rely for the sign. Uh everything else applies with the town departments, type of sign, the elimination, uh attachment. And I think that's really the only case that I have for.
Uh boldy sun base, uh state hours, right, one one basis before the other nine twenty?
Correct.
Any questions on the board members?
Well, I have to just ask what I like to talk to you about here, what's what's the problem with the shrinking of the sign?
Uh if we try to get out of the bar, what we're seeing, as this is a very small compared to if you look at the building size. It's on a thirteen foot by uh twenty seven foot wall and given the traffic flow, it might just be, it's gonna be a small wall sign to be seen by the public.
Alright, do you uh know anything about the size of the sign at the extinguisher cabinets, right?
No.
The uh renders of the sign on building faces are too shallow.
Correct.
And although you're saying the measurements that the twenty five change square foot measurement includes basically just box in the area around the letters you go on for, that used channelized individual letters
Right.
internally lit.
Correct.
And the size of the area box, the box area around, what I just said, comes out of uh point one square feet.
Uh if you take this, the word Verizon, you can modify that, it's twenty one square feet.
And the check mark is stretched out.
Correct, so if you draw a box around the check mark, the annual letters, where it's going by.
For members, that is the only signage, Verizon signage on the facade, so the facade
Those two little bags, correct. There is a lot of door guards, wouldn't get out of that.
Nor the Verizon uh sign, so maybe that's brand across.
Correct.
Any questions on the board? Here none, thank you.
Thank you.
And any members called for shooting tonight?
Yes.
Is that on this?
Yes.
My name is Ross J, I apologize for being late, I know you're stressed, I didn't mind that, so I'm very sorry. Um so I'm just, I'm maintenance coordinator for South of New York, that's gonna be our store, we're very excited to be there. The only thing I really wanted to add, because I think James did a great job in trying to describe what we're trying to do here is is the setback from curbs that really concern us and all the all the revenues that we started were all with this size letter, point three inch letter, so that's really So that's really what we're into, it's smaller than most of our stores, but we would be very happy to have a twenty three, given the back of the setback. The setback was really what concerned me, we left some trees there, so. Kind of hard to see that, uh, straight out elevation to the intersection. But, uh, that, I think that's the only thing on the added change comments is. The orientation of the building and the way that it's going to be. Really, you can't see, I think the sign is coming from four. So you see it in many different projects, developing the area that will come through the main intersection, you don't see that. But the trees are there too, so we really want to have a present, it's gonna be proportionate. And I think the revenue shows that.
So the usual size of the signs larger?
Yeah, we usually hold twenty three inches on most of our. You don't know how many closest we have is flat on to this location.
Do you know the size of the wall?
Not a lot. I'll probably find him on the phone.
Don't put the phone, I drive by every day, so I can get it, but it's.
Pretty sure that, and you know, I see the, the requirement for the twenty four square feet makes sense. Like if you're in a certain law situation, I saw that as I was talking about. The term, like, you know, it's perfect because everybody's uniform and it really makes sense. They're gonna stand on a building like this, this setback, I really feel that it looked too small proportionally. Did the board receive a rendering of the smaller ones?
On the building itself?
Yeah.
No, it was not.
So maybe you don't have a lot got.
You mind if you keep it in the share?
Yeah, I'll get it, yeah. I just want you to see proportionally, it's just as small. You know, just when you're driving through the intersection, it's already hairy busy.
You're seeing all the, this is the twenty three inch letters.
No, that's, that's the eighteen.
Oh, that's the eighteen, gotcha.
I'm hoping that you have the twenty four. It's a side, it's a figure of difference.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just gonna take this one page.
Okay.
You know, my age for an asset such as, uh, uh, this. Yes, back, back. Uh, under reasons to the record, it has exhibits twenty twenty dash eleven A, twenty twenty dash eleven B. And for the record, those two exhibit show, uh, creating the sign to the next smaller letter size, which is a niche, which would need code.
Which would need code, correct.
Including the checkmark.
Correct.
Yeah, well, it's a half to twenty three.
This is correct, yeah. This is the original application.
Good to be, sir.
Good, thank you. Uh, any other members of the public who should see me tonight regarding this appeal? Was this proposed, any standing product? Do you, were you there for the planning board side of reviews?
So all of the rendering showed, it shows twenty three inches of all the rendering. So well done until they applied for the permit for the sign that it came back. So that's like all grass and the notches, but that's the area where it was seen in twenty three. We had the facade, the, you know, the tall pyramid wall. So I think what I'm thinking of is twenty three.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So the fact of the thing, thought this is important, I don't see the fact that it was.
You should see, uh, sketches showing that the sign was there, whether or not, uh. I believe the applicants indicated they didn't do the actual calculations the way that they were done when they permitted file. So they didn't realize that variance would be required.
And again, being part of public, you cannot be able to see the rendering of the salon. However, occurred both the penny board and the zoning board. The proposal has set up to the town website. Part of it needs to discuss the approval or not, or just want to, the integration process.
To the town, okay. Okay, any other comments tonight, any questions to report? Hearing none, or take a motion to close public hearing. I'm looking at a motion by Tom Conway, wait a second.
Second.
By Matt Austin guy, all those in favor, I oppose abstaining. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Um. As stated before, you're welcome to stay or, uh, leave, so you guys, uh, and the public interaction, unfortunately, we didn't type up. So, uh, with that, uh, we will skip, uh, the first seeker on the agenda. We're going to enable, moving on to the second zoning board of appeals twenty twenty dash ten. Big Red Dog House, seven hundred, public determined by application to area variances. The zoning board of appeals is considered this product under secret to determine that this product meets requirements for a type two ash and no further secret review is required. Regarding appeal twenty twenty dash eleven, also memo, TCJ Troy Road LLC. Five nine seven, public determined by for applications for two area variances. The zoning board of appeals is considered this product under secret to determine that this product meets requirements for a type two ash and no further secret review is required. So with those two, we can enter into workshop, um, fold. Uh, again, we'll skip over to the first, uh, deliberation. All I can think about is the place presidential to debate these slides flying around there.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure Tom Wayne on every camera. So, welcome to the ball. Alright, with that, uh, anybody who wants to begin deliberations on twenty twenty dash kind of Big Red Dog House?
I, I think, I think another clarification on this, it was stated that, um, by the applicant. That he no longer needs the variance for the width of the sign. He says that the nine point oh seven five feet width was including the, the, the old brand, you know, on the artwork on the top of the sign. And the actual sign is, is maybe why. Do, are we to not consider that tonight, not offer any type of decision on that tonight, since he doesn't believe he needs it? And here's my concern, does the building inspector think, thinks he needs it because of that sign? If it's a sign, it's a sign. You, you know what I'm saying? Even though it's an app or, it, it might not be actually the sign, it is the apparatus of the sign. Um. That, that is my concern. Do, do we, do we consider getting the width? Or can we table that or not, give them width variance? And, and because it's not gonna be an issue, or is it gonna be an issue? And do we need to consider it?
Out of consistency, go. I'm thinking we can table that portion of the variance request, which will allow further information and or withdrawal from the applicant.
Correct.
Or, or we could just not rule on it at all, and it needs to come back for that, or?
That's, that's, that's.
The heart is still in the field, right?
No, that is.
Twenty five, sixty seven, yes.
I think that's still a lot, I think it's a lot.
Yes, because the existing sign is still over.
Yeah.
Right, even though it's going higher, it's really just the existing sign higher. So the height is, they're only meant with this, so they unofficially withdrew the request for the width. So we could table that, we could always reopen and uphold hearing based on board members here. So I think we can table that, requests to.
Yeah, just wanting to clarify that, so we didn't have a discussion about something that we don't need to act on tonight.
Correct.
Maybe because that is a, uh, question that, when you look at the picture. I mean, the width of the letter is, is it certain size, when you add the top? Isn't that still considered part of the sign, or?
Let, that was gonna be my follow up question, so if we're not considering a part, the top part of the sign with the width, then why are we not considering the, the top part of the sign with the height?
He's considering, even the overall sign that you see is still only eighty wide. To have the width or the edge, you say that's not part of the sign, you don't see that.
Because, because it's true.
True, but just, yeah.
And then the height, because we shouldn't consider the height from all the, the top or the, okay, that's, that's.
So, and again, we come back to it next meeting, maybe.
Yeah.
Unless you want to have a ball tonight?
Or it's all, which is a horse sign, not the roof of the barn.
The request is eleven point six seven feet tall, which includes the red.
Correct.
Because of the facing is part of the sign, the red is also part of the sign.
I'm agree, agree directly, okay. I'm waiting. Can I just ask one quick clarification? That the issue between the pylon versus the zed, for the discussion in that?
That is, that is for the stuff that was part, would be in addition.
Yeah.
Uh, to maintain any, have a pylon sign that the base is kept so many edges are feet off the ground, similar to other signs? Or it should, the variance doesn't need to have an issue.
Any difference, any difference with the pylon sign, Jeff, would that, would, would be the variance?
Yes, we still need the variance, which is down and.
No, before, I thought it was a couple, I thought it was twenty two feet on some. I guess some sort of difference, so. If you have comments, we report this as the same.
With the passion you were in, we're just within the line inside three standing sign, fifty six. Which is no three standing sign, which is more than twenty five feet height of this grade. Which is a heck of a lot taller than.
Yeah, but, but, you know, just really quick, it's a one minute, one minute, but it's reaching inside, it's a one minute sign.
If the base was.
With the exact same.
All the way to the ground though, then it becomes a lining sign. If it's a pylon sign, I mean, it gives a ticket near up to twenty five feet tall, so that's where. It was claimed that potentially would have happened in the past. When it fits, to get over the height restriction, they let up a little bit of the whole ticket, almost they could still say it's a freestanding sign rather than a lining sign. I don't think, because the sign is, is the sign, freestanding sign is a freestanding sign. This is the aluminum wrap of the freestanding sign hole, so this is making a lining sign per se. Mining sign is usually built on a rubber platform, like we had. Peter Harris, or Price Chopper, someone bigger plots.
So, this is, so this is, this is sign that we're seeing here in the renderings, it's not a lining sign by the letter of the law.
Not for us to decide tonight. Not for us tonight, but the code of enforcement officer has played that this is a lining sign. So we should proceed under the presumption it remains a lining sign. And we, the proposal, that was so, for the planning board members, detailed report was. If we haul the racket off, put it off the ground, we may get it around being a mining sign. Now we start making determinations, which we're not supposed to do, so. I think probably the best course of action, the appeal that has been noticed with the public, that has been heard so far in the public hearing. Is regarding a mining sign request to be eleven point six seven feet tall. We weigh on that, vote yes or no. Get a yes, they move forward, get a no, they go back to the drawing board, find a different ways to go with the sign. And why is it code? Thanks. So with that, I think a great workshop discussion. And the fact that they put a mine, a freestanding pylon sign in front of that property potentially of twenty five feet tall. So this is, this is a freestanding sign of which. They are not proposing to increase the signage per se any taller than existing. So we're like, it's a non performant sign, but not increasing that non performant, so actually putting a sign below that second tenant's height. We also have to weigh on, um.
A dragon, or. Yeah, move it, it's not that, only uses it in. And the wrap, or. It's wider.
So, uh, last clarification. Because I think we went full circle around this discussion. And the issue is. If it remain eight feet wide, that is a requirement, that they can't remain wider than eight feet wide. The height they're saying is still a freestanding sign, pylon sign. So they're not asking for, I don't know, they're asking for a variance. Because it's a pylon, not a meat.
Yeah, yeah.
They're asking only, now they only remain any variance, but we that has two business names on the sign. Which is allowed, it's only supposed to give the name of the plaza, not any of the business laws, which we run into all the time.
Right, so they're talking about any other sign, can't have the size of the existing sign. So we have fifty percent increase in signage.
Which is before size wise, rather than the fact that it's a name of each business.
True, yeah, true, yeah, yeah, relative to this system, two rather than one.
Alright, let's start with just words of. What would we do with this sign? What we knew was this sign, the applicant proposes to construct a plaza monument sign. Eleven point six seven feet tall and nine point zero seven feet wide, which names two individual businesses. The review of the proposal will not comply with the provisions of the town zoning law. Section three hundred and three point two B zero two, sign shall be no larger than a five feet tall and an eight feet wide. The names of individual students, the names of individual businesses are not permitted. Therefore, the proposed action requires bear with me, should have said three area variances for the property located at seven hundred twenty three turnpike. Now, this would have been, we're tall than five feet, we just said we're wider than eight feet, and we can't have two businesses. The applicant said, we, that the with one goes away because we're actually.
It's a misrepresentation.
This is represented, however, they still need the height. Because it's greater than five.
And it's still the digital.
Still those two names, two names.
This is, I wish I asked this question, but probably wouldn't know. How far off is that building from the road? Because the zoning also said the guy looked at it, if it's if that multi tenant building is it's greater than eight feet off the road, then they're allowed to have all the um tenant sign. But they're definitely not eight feet off the road, they're right on the opposite.
No, it's pretty much, pretty much.
For this.
Yeah.
Within.
Within. Alright, so, so we're all clear? We're down to two area variances, right?
What's the number of clients?
Height and whether or not they're allowed to have tenants on the sign. Good. With that, I'll go back to where we started, some of the deliberation. If it is declared to be a pylon sign or we just need the ugly metal hole that exists in signs standing on, the height requirement would go away and be allowed to put up to that sign to twenty five feet in the air with the top areas.
Well, I think to my next question, Jeff, maybe you can answer one more, put it on the members of the board. What is the advantage to a pylon sign versus a monument sign and why there's a height requirement for one and that's different from the other?
I think the pylon is terrible, so the blocks side view.
There is a planned principal visual aesthetic issue that a monument could be overbearing if it's too big versus a pylon twenty five feet here on the bridge, it's a restriction, something like that.
I think that the issue would be real, or a basic sign, if you have a providing signs, say they prefer to make it.
Which most are.
Then you would want to be any wider than this, that's why the restrictions there, or the pole. And it would be a traffic issue as well.
The combination, however, monument signs have to be eight fifteen feet off the roadway so that you can see around the sign to not create a sight disturbance or structure for traffic.
So this is this is parallel, it's not very big or small.
Right.
In a sense, it would seem to be more of a pylon. Uh, you want to see the question.
Correct, although that is, let me make sure I don't say eleven point six seven feet tall. John, I do think that is the word pointing to though that this sign is parallel to the roadway, not for the big truck. So it would have less of a visual obstruction, visual obstruction, which is a V block on the face of the building itself. Versus neighbor properties or your site lots. And the second one, the two names. I understand concerns, I think that the two names also becomes a concern on a public turnpike, if you look for businesses. This building is set back a little bit in front of the roadway and a large landscape or in front of that building. And they try to maintain uh parameters and such. And you notice this is a reuse building that's not consistent with what we might be looking for for this business, I mean, it's basically the old app land. You usually know where it's in the back, so there is no visual identification along that, it's one of them to know, oh yeah, that's about neighbors, and there's no chemicals to fuel it on, it's what you drive on, so I do see a little bit of a need to have a marker, an education marker on this property.
Yeah, the other really good, how would you handle to, what would you possibly sign on the doors?
Right.
You know, what you can promise and that.
I also think you on character, just about every business and plaza, in extreme which has multiple tenants on the signs. The planning board just approved the monument sign at a brand new plaza next door with a multiple tenant sign.
Which is about fifty percent white.
Fifty percent white brand. So to say that this would be on character is something that they just approved as part of a P D, planned out in this, because they were allowed to do it as part of that. And it goes to show that this is consistent with what's going on up and down the turnpike. So, you can only go try to change things. You have the certain points. While we're quiet, I don't see a whole new fire ride, anybody looking to make a motion one way or the other tonight? You're not, I'll take a stab at something, you guys feel free to weigh in, check away. Before I start, you're going to we're going to not entertain the width of the sign to be greater than eight feet. You will, for the purpose of our discussion tonight, assume it is eight feet tall, and if it's not, the applicant has to come back or the variance to attend a public hearing, so. Student, what does that say? Eighty wide. Now, Eastern Board of Appeals, another matter by the Big Red Dog House LLC for two area variances. Resolution and final decision on all Board of Appeals, appeal number twenty two dash ten. Whereas application has been filed by the Big Red Dog House, seven hundred, called a turnpike, Eastern West New York, point two zero six one. The applicant proposes to construct a plaza monument sign, eleven point six seven feet tall and eight feet wide, which names two individual businesses. The review of the proposed work will not comply with the following provisions of the town's own law, sections three point three point two, B zero two. Sign shall be no larger than a five feet tall and an eight feet wide, the names of individual businesses are not permitted. And whereas the applicant filed an application requesting two area variances at the property located at seven hundred twenty three turnpike, Eastern West New York, tax amount number one seventy seven point eight dash four dash ten. And whereas the Board of Appeals has duly published a notice of public hearing regarding this appeal in the record on October sixth, twenty twenty. And whereas notice of the public hearing was provided by certified mail to the owner of the property within two hundred feet of the land involved in the application to the Town Planning Board and to the Rest of County Urban Economic Development Plan. And whereas a public hearing was held by the Board of Appeals on Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty, to consider this appeal. And whereas the planning board of the town in street at September twenty third, twenty twenty meeting provided a report on the request of area variances with a recommendation. And whereas at this hearing, the applicant, as well as any and all persons interested in this appeal were heard, their statements recorded, and various written material including exhibits had been were entered into the record. And whereas all statements, written material, and exhibits submitted in connection with said appeal have been carefully considered. And whereas this appeal met all the requirements of the seeker and the seeker, now therefore be resolved. That the Board of Appeals makes the following findings of fact. There will not be an undesirable change in the characters in the neighborhood, as evidenced by the recently approved monument sign at the property next door, as well as the orientation of this sign parallel to the highway and not perpendicular to it. Two, there is no other method available to the applicant, as the second business is in the back of the property and not visible from the highway. And this is a reuse of the existing sign on the property. Three, the requested variance is substantial, as it is requested eleven point six seven feet versus the five feet allowed into the code. However, a pylon sign would be allowed at twenty five feet tall. And again, this sign which is oriented in parallel to the highway and not perpendicular to it, reducing its visual appearance. Four, the proposed variance will not have adverse effect on neighborhood, as the sign is set back from the highway, consistent with surrounding properties, and is adding decorative features to blend into the property itself. Five, the alleged difficulty is self created, however, that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Resolved that the application for two area variances for a plaza monument sign of eleven point six seven feet tall and eight feet wide, which names two individual businesses, be granted with no conditions. This resolution was moved by Jeff Hammer and seconded by Bob Stewart III at a meeting duly held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. And in discussion on motion. Here in uh, folks taking that as follows, John Conway.
Yes.
Mad Asguy.
Yes.
Um, he asked, is Jeff Hammer, yes, Bob Stewart III.
Yes.
Scott Stroud.
Yes.
And the motion carries five two zero, thank you all. Okay, move on to twenty twenty dash eleven, C J Troy Road LLC, which is the Verizon uh building, anybody which is starting the session?
Well, I think the minor point, the advocate said, you know, the variance they're asking for is minor, you know, not as substantial. And I think the answer I got, the uh, you said a gentleman on his talk, he pointed out some of that the major roads and the tree store name, I think it made good sense to me, so.
John, can you just clarify, do you feel it's substantial or is it not substantial?
Um, well, I was hoping, you know, it's whatever, I don't feel it's substantial, but anyhow, I'd say it is substantial or it's pretty high.
Okay, dang.
I think it was a sixty percent variance, right? That's um substantial, and the other thing I'd like also say is I know how we calculate the size of sign, and we're talking about bringing in that V where the V is placed opposite to the right. But I almost venture guess, you know, just the Verizon name was twenty one square feet, well, what, how many square feet is that V? It it it's probably not three square feet, you know, it it, so it's kind of an odd shaped sign. I also was led to see that rendering with a smaller font size, that does make actually a big difference, I thought. And and I also think just sort of the general, I know a lot of people always talk, like talk about traffic safety, and and I kind of realize a lot of times with that argument, but I actually think that's a pretty busy intersection, and there may be some folks who aren't necessarily used to that intersection, that part of the town when they're looking for the store, well, but uh I I agree with you, John, it's very minimal of variance.
I think the fact that it's busy individual channelized letters, so imagine you just went there and just measured the exact size of each letter, who else time, who else run letters, it's probably a better way to do it, but I agree, and I think that I read a check mark instead of one, so very easily a V uh for the rest of the sign, so.
And if it's square footage, it's more, almost thirty forty square feet, it's twenty six by fourteen, maybe twelve, twenty four, twenty five square foot sign, and three forty, it's a pretty small percentage of the whole surface area to use.
I can appreciate that there's no other Verizon branded sign uh built to per base, so.
And and you know, the other thing too, just to kind of hit is, how many variances if it was given to Star Wars right across the street? There's quite a few, um, and there's a lot more signage, square footage signage over there as opposed to what the Verizon building is doing. It's a very minimalist advertisement in that. Pretty large building.
Consider that as rehab of an existing building, to reuse, you've got a property that was there.
Yeah, I don't think you do it.
Any other discussion, anybody looking to make a motion tonight?
I'll make it, just one more.
Thank you.
It's been a long patch, I might be a little rusty. Uh, resolution filed in the Board of Appeals, appeals number twenty twenty dash eleven, where the application been filed by the T C J Troy Road LLC of two seventy Murray Avenue, Delaware, New York. Zip code one two oh five four, the applicant proposes to construct two twenty five point four three four square foot facade mounted uh signs on the southwest and southeast elevations, the review of the proposed work will not comply with the following provisions of the town law. Sections, town zoning law, section three point three point two A B I I I, the maximum shall be twenty four square feet. And can I do where, whereas, on the file?
Yeah.
Okay, whereas of the file. Resolve that the Board of Appeals makes the following findings of fact. There will not be an undesirable change in character in neighborhood, as this is a centrally located business district, with many businesses having as much or more signage on their businesses. Two, there is no method available to the applicant, as there is another method available to the applicant, but it it is not as effective as the larger plots. The requested variance is not substantial, correct, it is not substantial. This variance is a six percent increase in overall square footage. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect to the neigh- on the neighborhood, as it is a business district within the heart of a town extremely much. The alleged difficulty is self created, however, that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of this area variance. Resolve that this application for two area variances for two area variances, two twenty five point four three four square facade mounted signs on the southwest and southeast elevations be granted with no conditions. This resolution was resolved by Robert Stewart III and seconded by seconded. Matt Asguy. At a meeting duly held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, would you like me to take a roll call?
Uh, yeah, any discussion on motion?
Do we need a per setback building orientation, trees kept, you know, in terms of benefits of the applicant achieving in other, you know, feasible ways? I just thought that was another key piece.
That's fine, you would like to have that as the, there's no other method available to the applicant section?
Yeah.
And then what would you like to put in there?
We talked about a per setback, building orientation, and in keeping the trees there, some of the reasons for that.
I'm I'm okay with adding that into the uh, into the resolution. Yes, sir.
And other discussion? There you go. John Conway.
Yes.
Matt Asguy.
Yes.
Tom Higgy, Addison, Jeff Hammer.
Yes.
Bob Stewart, yes, Scott Stroud.
Yes.
And motion carries five zero, thank you. Alright, so next meeting day potentially would be October twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Uh, nothing currently on the agenda, however, we may have to uh re- However, we may have to, uh, reconvene for twenty twenty dash zero nine, with contrast, and we will have our relation from the planning department, the building department, on where that stands. Uh, before that, I mean, we'll get that out, uh, also stay tuned, uh, there is movement in trying to be able to read back to town hall. Um, so by then, next meeting, uh, we'll soon be back there, but, uh, clear about that, where we can have a sit, so. With that, approval of minutes, September twenty second, twenty twenty.
Agreed.
Ready to vote, anybody wish to make a motion to approve the ten minutes?
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Scott Stroud, a second.
No, seven minutes.
John Conway, calls in favor, I oppose, same, motion carries five two zero, thank you all. Uh, with that, I will enter the motion to both committees, I'm making that motion, uh, by Sueard, uh, seven minutes, I'll tell in favor, I oppose, same.